Technology issues there. Right? In just a second, everybody. One, two, three, four, five, and six. Okay. Okay. Good evening. And so we're going to go ahead and start the movie now. Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is the study session meeting for February 1st. Two thousand and twenty-two. The time right now is seven oh one P M. Ms. Wyckoff, will you please call the roll?
I guess council members present and establishing a quorum are council members Foulter, Kenny, Hanford, Davis, Gamble, and Scarborough.
Thank you. And with the record show that council member Fisher had mentioned at a former meeting or via email that he would not be here this evening. So unless there's objection, we'll consider his absence as excused. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item. That's pledge allegiance with council member Kenny. Council member Kenny.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
To the flag of the United States of America.
For which it stands.
To the Republic.
One nation under God indivisually with liberty and justice.
With liberty and justice.
Thank you, council member Kenny. All right, we're going to go on to public comments. This is a time set aside for members of the public to speak to the city council on any issue related to the city of Monroe, except any quasi judicial matter that is subject to a public hearing. Three minutes are afforded to each speaker. If you'd like to speak this evening, please hit star nine if you're on the phone. Or hit your little raise hand icon in the middle of your screen. If you're in Zoom, if you're interested in speaking this evening, please raise your hand now. All right, one more, one more call for public comments. Again, if you're in Zoom, please hit the raise hand icon. If you are on the phone, please hit star nine. All right, I don't see any hands being raised in the attendees list. We're going to go ahead and move on now to council member reports. Now we'll start off with council member Kenny this evening. Any report this evening?
No report from me. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Hanford.
Not tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Davis.
No report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Foulter.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you, council member Gamble.
Good.
Thank you, council member Scarborough.
Yes, went to the VFW pancake. Sausage, eh, cook off down at the senior center. The other morning and it was. Nice to see the people. Had a couple conversations with a couple of people and.
All right. Thank you, council member Scarborough. Anything further? Council member Scarborough.
Yeah. There's nothing else to report other than that was a nice event to go to.
Thank you, council member Scarborough. All right, we're going to go ahead on to mayor and administrative reports, Ms. Knight, for extended agenda. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. Looking forward to our next meeting on the eighth of February. We will be having a legislative affairs committee where we will elect a chair, take a look at the two thousand and twenty-two work plan. Talk about amending chapter four point five oh for Parks Board. And then taking a look at the council's rules of procedure. So we will have a busy meeting for that meeting on February eighth. For the regular city business meeting, just a reminder that we are bringing forward those items that had been scheduled at our last meeting that had to be canceled. I'm not going to go through the list of consent items because it's rather long and the print is rather small. But I do want to bring to your attention that we will be having a public hearing on park impact fees. And also an emergency interim ordinance for the food bank. And then an ordinance for broadband telecommunications franchise with Astound. So those are all be public hearings. Looking at final action, we will have an ordinance for second reading for the Woodlands annexation. Under new business, we'll have first reading of the Park and Recreation Open Space Plan and amendments to chapter seven of the comprehensive plan. Also looking at amendments to title three of the municipal code for park impact fees. And then looking at the scope of work and the contract for our comprehensive plan consultant. So that'll be coming forward to you. And then a resolution setting the public hearing date for a right of way vacation. So there are a number of items that are new business. Under unfinished business, we will have a motion of support for the District Five representative for the Board of Health. And then our reports from departments. Those reports will all be written reports. We won't be giving any verbal reports next week just because of the length of the agenda itself. Any questions for the February eighth meeting?
Any questions, council members? No, thank you. Go ahead.
All right, then moving forward to the study session on February fifteenth. We will be having a finance and human resources committee meeting, taking a look at the two thousand and twenty-two work plan. And then also add a draft recruitment and retention policy. We will be also then having a regular study session that evening with council. And we'll be talking about an ownership transfer of the Monroe Youth Activities Building, and Mr. Roberts will be presenting that item. And that's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Ms. Knight. Any questions for Ms. Knight? All right. Thank you. City administrator report.
I'm waiting for Jody to change the slide so I could remember what I put on the city administrators' report. Thank you, Ms. Wyckoff. The city administrators' report, I'm sure that Mr. Farrell will be covering this at a future meeting. But I did just want to give kudos to both Mr. Farrell and Mr. Swanson for the really well-done North Hill Park Design Workshop that was held last Wednesday. We had somewhere between thirty and thirty-five residents who participated in that workshop. It was our consultants Meg, the same consulting firm that is working on our Park and Recreation Open Space Plan update. They facilitated the meeting and I thought that they together with staff just did a really phenomenal job at hearing what local residents and people who participated in that workshop had to say. So looking forward to seeing what comes next from that and an update from Mr. Farrell next time he provides counsel with a parks update.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say, looking then at legislative update, I just wanted to bring attention to a couple of items to the city council. We are going to be having the cutoff for bills in the House of Origin, and that's happening this Thursday on February third. So any bills that need to make it out of the House of Origin and onto the floor for a vote, that cutoff day is Thursday, which will be really helpful to staff and our government affairs specialist because there are a lot of bills to be tracking right now and making sure that if there's anything that affects the city that we're commenting on those. I did also want to mention to council that our House Bill ten twenty-five, which is the voter-approved one-tenth of one percent sales tax for parks maintenance and operation, has moved out of committee and has been referred to rules, which is the next step needed in order to pull it on to the floor then for a floor vote in the House. So that bill is still in action and will be continuing to monitor that in the coming days. The other bill that I wanted to bring to council's attention is House Bill seventeen eighty-two. And this is a Governor Inslee-backed bill. It's one of the missing middle housing bills that the legislature has been looking at. There's a companion bill that's in the Senate. It would require cities, including the city of Monroe, to allow duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes in zones that currently allow single-family homes, or the city would need to adopt a minimum density equivalent. So we're tracking this very closely. One of the concerns that cities have raised with this bill is just the need to plan accordingly for infrastructure. So if you've got a single-family residential zone, you have an expectation of the number of people that will be in that area. You size your streets and your water and your sewer lines all to accommodate that level of density. And once you start to take that out of the mix, it'll be a change in the way that cities typically do business, particularly around long-range planning. So we're monitoring this. I don't know that there's anything that's a fundamental concern other than just making sure that we're tracking what our future planning requirements will be. So those are two bills that we're, we're currently tracking somewhat closely in the state legislature.
All right, council members, do you have any questions or thoughts on any of that? Go ahead, council member Gamble.
Just hadn't seen it. Do we have any update on the House Bill seventeen seventy-two, which is the emergency orders bill that's currently going through? Curbing or putting a time limit on the governor's emergency orders?
I haven't seen any recent updates to that, council member Gamble, but I'm certainly happy to follow it up on it tomorrow. And if I can find out anything, send something out to council in general so you can track that bill.
I would appreciate it. Trying to cut through the stuff online makes it difficult at times. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
I would support that too. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Knight? All right, thank you. So we'll bring back some more information on that. Thank you, Deborah. Thank you, Ms. Knight. Okay, for me, mayor's report, I don't have any other report other than Monroe this week for this evening. So we're going to go ahead and move into, go ahead, council member Scarborough.
Sorry, it keeps trying to raise not. Is anybody else having problems being kicked out of the meeting and then brought right back in?
I think from what I've witnessed is just you, sir. Council member Scarborough, you're on mute. You're on mute.
Okay, so if I disappear every once in a while, you'll know why.
Understood. Thank you. All right, any other questions before we move on to discussion? All right, thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to discussion items now. First item is item seven point one. This is Powell Street Reconstruction with Mr. Peterson. So we'll go ahead and bring Mr. Peterson forward. Good evening, Mr. Peterson. You're now in the panel.
All right. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Trying to, you know how it is when you get promoted, everything gets shuffled on the screen. So I'm trying to get control of the technology here without looking too much like a fool. But tonight is a quick presentation on one of our capital projects, one of the Powell Street Reconstruction Project. It's been in the works for a while, so I just wanted to bring this to council to give you an update on the project and where we're heading. For the, I have a slide attachment too, so Ms. Wyckoff could advance the slide probably two positions. That would probably be great. So Powell Street is in Old Town Monroe, South Monroe. This particular project focuses on that block between Kelsey Street and Sam Street. It has one of the dubious honors of being probably one of our worst pavement conditions in Monroe. And so this segment's been on our radar for some time to fix. You see on the example photos we've taken, you can see the shape of the pavement and what it is like. There's been some paw hole patching on patching, and it's just time to fix because it's degraded in such a way. The, the maintenance on it would be a full reconstruction of that street. Instead of our typical grind off the surface and then put on a couple new inches of asphalt, this will take it down to the aggregate base and reconstruct it. On top of that, we have drainage, kind of ponding issues on the existing curb line. We have some areas where the curb line's been filled in with asphalt. And, you know, for whatever reason that was done, it might be to get over the puddles, or it might be to keep from, say, some trailer hitches from bottoming out onto the sidewalk or the pavement due to some adverse grade. But we have some other issues beyond just resurfacing the roadway. And then finally, we also have an opportunity to replace them aging water main underneath the roadway when it's been pulled out. So all in all, this pro, this project has become kind of a multi-faceted project with several elements at work. And so these kinds of projects take a little bit more to design and construct. We've been in the design process for a little while and we've taken this concept, a few concept designs to the community through an open house and online survey back in April of last year. Ms. Wyckoff, if you could advance the slide, that would be nice. We threw a couple of design concepts out there in general. It shows curb gutter sidewalk on the south side. And just a point of matter, there is existing curb gutter and sidewalk on the south side. We had just replaced it due to its age and, and needing to re-profile the road for better drainage. The north side is a little more different. In some places, there's curb gutter, sorry, I'll try that again, curb gutter and sidewalk. In other places, there's just curving gutter. Then yet in other places, there's nothing. So we thought it'd be a good opportunity to go ahead and fully improve that side to put a new curb gutter and sidewalk across the whole north as well. On top of that, over on the east side, kind of a interesting intersection where, where the east end of our project's a lot wider than the other side of the street where Powell continues. And so we came up with some options, some a little more radical than others about, you know, ways to address that, help people align across the street. And we kind of showed all this to the community in a virtual open house and online survey. We collected that information in April, as mentioned earlier. And in general, the people were expressing desire just to have the road essentially be in the same shape where we have two lanes and two parking strips along the outside. They didn't really want to get crazy with the intersection. They in general prefer just to have what we call an offset alignment. So, and then there was some concern or request to not install sidewalk along the north side. Just, just to leave it as is, if you will, maintain the, the front lawn all the way to the existing pavement. And then there is a, there's quite a bit of comments about traffic, traffic volumes, speeding traffic, maybe even large trucks. And a lot of that, we believe is probably from cars coming off of Lewis Street and working the side streets to get around the congestion that typically forms in the afternoon. So those are the comments that we received. Our staff took it back. We analyzed the comments. We looked at our existing policies and our standards in the city. And Ms. Wyckoff, can the next slide, slide, please? This is an example of some of the things we look at. The pink or magenta purple lines that you see, those are our G I S mapped out sidewalks that we currently have. And you can see in our project area where there's a decent amount of sidewalk already, but there is definitely a gap missing. And so it's a, it's a good opportunity, we felt, to go ahead and continue to provide walking surfaces, safe walking surfaces, as we have the opportunity to do so. And since we had already have a contractor there reconstructing the roadway, it'd be a good time, we felt, to build sidewalk on the north. And so there's, you know, along with the, the pink lines or purple lines on the screen, you also see some photos of sidewalks up Sam Street and along Powell Street. A next slide, please. So as I mentioned earlier, we looked at our codes. You see in the upper left, we have our typical roadway sections that we require new development to construct, which includes roadway widths, you know, driving lanes, parking lanes, planter strips, and sidewalks on both sides. We have an actual section in our Monroe Municipal Code called Complete Streets where it talks about building infrastructure to not only, you know, new development, but existing public streets too, to create a, a complete or comprehensive connected transportation network that balances, you know, access, mobility, health, et cetera, to, you know, pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists and whatnot. So it's an encompassing complete street system. So that definitely gives food for thought in terms of building sidewalks on both sides of the street. We also have our comp plan, policy three, under our goal one, separate vehicle lanes from sidewalks through use of landscaping strips and, and on-street parking. So, and I know there's another portion in our unified development, development regulations. I just couldn't find it in time, but it also talks about, you know, kind of the idea of complete streets and building sidewalks. So we took all this into account. Next slide, please. And so we came up with the preferred design alternative that's shown here tonight. It's pretty much a straight, straight alignment with curb gutter sidewalk on both sides of the roadway. We would replace the curb gutter and sidewalk on the south side. And we would replace what's there on the north side as well as build new where there isn't sidewalk before. It's all fits within the existing right of way, so we do not need to acquire more property. It's just part of the existing public right of way. At the intersection of Powell and Sam Street, we proposed some pedestrian bulbs. Bulbs on what that does is there's a couple of things that accomplishes. It shortens the distance to where people are walking on the street surface. So it's a safety improvement. And the shape is twofold. It, it has curvature to allow our street sweeping services to continue to sweep the flow line. And also is designed such that it wouldn't take away any existing parking on the street. So as you know, state law, you're not supposed to park within a certain distance of intersection anyway. So that's why there's an opportunity to create some of the bulbs there. So it doesn't, doesn't impact on-street parking with these bulb outs. So it's a, it's a safety improvement for our pedestrians. So that's what we would propose as a preferred concept there. We took, we had this available in June. We received some public comments during one of our council meetings about the traffic, 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 traffic out there. And in the process, in that, during that time, we were starting to develop a, a street calming policy. So we decided to park this project for on hold and wait for that policy to run its course and develop. And that was pretty much the summer time, late summer of last year. And then once the policy was developed, we looked at calming, traffic calming measures. And, and really, we were looking at the ideas of maybe putting some radar feedback signs out there to try and remind people to, to slow down and whatnot. But that's pretty much would be the outcome of the policy that was installed. So with that, we kept the preferred design alternative. And then we had one more open house in just this past month in January where we showed this design to the neighborhood. We had a decent turnout of people. The comments were still the same, very heavily on, there's a lot of traffic out here. What can we do to lower the traffic counts, lower the speeders, lower the stops, stop sign runners, things like that? And, and there was, of course, there's still some comments about preferring not to have sidewalk on the north side. Or maybe not having a planter strip on the north side, in general, not trying to have the sidewalk get any closer to the existing homes as, as possible. And, but in the end, you know, with the policies in consideration, you know, the complete streets and whatnot, we kept, we held the preferred design alternative as it shows on your screen today. Again, the goal is to have brand-new curb gutter roadway sidewalks, new profiling to help facilitate proper drainage where we collect in the catch basins and pipe it underground to our existing infrastructure. And so it should come out to looking like a nice new road. Next slide, please. And there we are. So our, our goal there is to advance, continue to advance the design. Continuing, we're in February now, and we're still at a concept level. We'll probably get this project out more in the later part of the summer to get it constructed. But that is the end of my presentation. I wanted to give council an opportunity to comment on the design or ask any other questions. But that's it.
All right, thank you. So I'm just looking at your, the bottom of the agenda build alternatives to your request action. So just looking for council's thoughts on the preferred design concept, if that's good to go, or if there are other questions. So council members, do you, is there any objection to the preferred design concept that's been presented or any questions? Go ahead, council member Hanford.
Thank you. Yeah, can you remind us, Scott, what our traffic calming policy was that we decided? Because I, I remember I've read lots of emails and seen lots of information about traffic cutting through this area.
Yeah, the, so I have a traffic calming policy in my hand right here. I'll try and just not read it word for word. I'll just pretty much say that we'll, we'll look, the city staff would look at, you know, you know, people are complaining about traffic. We do traffic count study with, with see if there's truly excessive speeding. A lot of engineering is based on the eighty-fifth percentile of speeders. So for instance, if the posted speed limit is twenty-five and, and the eighty-fifth percentile is more like twenty-eight miles an hour, it's not really a speeding concern. It's more a perception issue. But on the, on a different matter, if the eighty-fifth percentile, you know, in the thirties, you know, actually is going pretty fast, then the next step would be an option of trying to remind people through law enforcement or some, some temporary signs. Or if it's, it's that rapid, the idea would be to put up some actual more permanent signs as, as you see in the past where you have some feedback radar signs that blink your speed when you're going too fast. Very similar to Fireland Boulevard where we have a couple of those in the school district, that school zone area. So, but there, the, some people may hope we're speed bumps or speed humps or speed tables of that nature where there's a, some vertical discontinuity in the road surface that will jar the driver if you're going too fast. So that is not part of our traffic calming policy.
Any other questions, council member Hanford?
Yeah, could, could you go to page thirty-eight? Forty-eight? Or maybe we should go to thirty-six? Yeah, thirty-six, please. On the presentation. I'm just looking at that map. And Jody, are you able to pull that up?
Was it one of the ones that's in the slideshow or is it different?
Yeah, yeah, it should, should be.
I'm trying to figure out which one it is that we're looking for here. Thirty.
Council member Hanford, are you looking for the one with the magent? Are you looking for the one with the magenta or are you looking for?
The yellow map on the left side, and it's got the, the pictures of the severely worn asphalt. It's like the very beginning. Right there. Now, keep going. That's it.
There we go.
Like this one, okay.
So correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Peterson, but the, the people that are cutting through. And the reason I'm bringing this up, I love the, the presentation. I'm good with the alternative and all that. The, the question I have in my mind is, can we get two birds with one stone here? Because so many of the complaints that I've received about traffic cutting through that area, I believe they're cutting off on the Sumac and then going to Sam Street up to Main Street? Or is it mainly Powell Street? Can, do you know the answer to that?
So the, I'll have to base it on the feedback that the community that attended our meetings provided. And I believe you're mostly correct. The first opportunity for people to get off Lewis Street in, in the afternoon is Sumac Street. And so they'll, they'll probably work that until Sumac Street becomes Sam Street and then shoot north. Now, there's probably a decent amount that will turn left on to Powell Street and get on to Kelsey for the true shot all the way up to Highway Two. You know, up by Rite Aid and, you know, the ultimate objective is to get on Kelsey Street, I believe. The, the bigger complaint is that people are not respecting the four-way intersection at Powell and Sam. So, you know, people are, you know, trying to time themselves, see how fast they can get home. It's a four-way stop. Usually no one else is there, so they might not come to a complete stop. It looks like they're running the stop sign. On top of that, in fact, it's past summer. There's a lot of reports of even large semi trucks using the local roads to get around, to get around the traffic. So we, we put in measures to curtail that, and the neighborhood is appreciative of our efforts this summer in terms of truck signage and whatnot along Lewis Street.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm all for your presentation and keeping the sidewalks in accordance with what our plan is. I guess I would be interested in hearing other council members' thoughts of, on installing not speed bumps but speed humps on this section, since we have to tear up the entire thing anyway. I would think that it would not cost that much extra to put in a couple of speed humps. Because I've, I've driven on those in Kirkland in this one neighborhood, and you definitely have to slow down. It's, it, it stops people from speeding. it it stops people from speeding. And uh I think since we're tearing it all apart, this might be the chance to do that for not a whole lot more uh cost. But I would love to hear other council members' thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Hanford. So I'm understanding you're fine with the preferred option. Your thought is whether or not there should be speed humps uh added to it. Thank you. Mr. Peterson, do you have any feedback on the speed humps before we move on to council members?
The feedback I have is that, you know, we have not employed any uh such devices in the city um yet. Um, I do, I'm aware that other cities have them installed. In fact, there's areas in the county not too far from Monroe that have some in their neighborhoods. Um, it is a deviation or or whatnot from the policy that we developed this summer. So um but uh to Mr. Hamford's point, you know, it's not too much cost to um construct speed humps. And honestly, um, our contractor being there building a road is one thing, but to have a contractor come back and create a speed hump later is is really just putting down some, you know, some um thick asphalt, you know, later. There is some economy of scale having a contractor already out there to do the work. But um in this case, adding bumps later um wouldn't be a big cost difference.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Roberts put his hand up. So uh, Mr. Roberts on that issue?
Just want to share with the council uh back when we went through the traffic calming policy, one of the unintended consequences that can occur if traffic calming uh devices become restrictive is the diversion of traffic that would normally have gone through a specific neighborhood to another neighborhood. So essentially, in some cases, not all, and this might not be the case here, but some to consider. Um, it can shift the problem elsewhere versus actually resolving the issues. Just wanted to share that perspective. It was part of the policy we ran through back last summer. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you. All right, council member Gamble, go ahead.
Yeah, um, so first I'll just respond, Kevin, you know, on from my perspective on the traffic, you know, calming side of the equation, I I would, I would personally want to see it in the policy um on what the parameters are on why um we would install a traffic calming or, you know, devices uh so that it's consistent. Um, so you know, what are the parameters that put it to that point? We have uh some sort of study or something from the police department recommendation, but there's a process to go through. So because, you know, I'm obviously, you know, over the last ten years, and I know you've been here as well, we've gotten several different uh requests. And so it really goes through, you know, what's the threshold? Uh, how would we would determine that? And that was the whole concept of putting it through uh and and going through the uh the uh the policy that we did this last summer and it nothing came of that. So if we were going to do that or wanted to recommend it on this, I would want personally that to be incorporated or changed in the overarching uh policy for the city. That's me personally. Uh, so it's consistent and then everybody knows. You know, hey, if they, if you've got a a neighborhood or a street, they know how to go about, you know, the process and getting that implemented or at least raised uh to the point where they can, we can make the determination based off of those factors of whether or not it meets that criteria uh would be my two cents on that. Um, the the piece that I had raised, I just kind of clarifying questions. Um, you know, I I agree with keeping the sidewalks, all that. But if I remember correctly, I know we had test testimony on this and I'm just double checking for the record. So we don't have sidewalks on the north um on multiple segments on on Powell Street, right? It would be like in every other street uh type scenario, because I know it, there's no on the north from um on Powell Street from Lewis to Blakely. I think there is from Blakely to Madison and then not from Madison to Sam. It's kind of a a hodgepodge. Is that correct, Mr. Peterson?
That is correct. And that's why that had those magenta line work on it. That pretty much showed where there's missing sidewalk gaps, you know. And as projects come along and we find opportunities to, you know, address that, we've we've had in the past, you know, we've done sidewalk projects where we're just filling gaps in our sidewalk network. But, you know, if we could forward, fast forward the years of Monroe, hopefully what we see is more and more magenta, you know, in all places of Monroe.
Right. Uh, I I appreciate this and thank you for bringing this slide back up. I just wanted to make sure that uh because there was so much testimony on this and from um uh from constituents around, hey, this doesn't make sense. I just want to make sure that it's on the record that the intent and the reason why we're going this is because the intent is to connect the dots and that we are taking advantage of all the projects that are coming along that are allowing us to do that. Um, you know, the next question I would have is, hey, do we have something or maybe from a strategic plan, you know, side of the equation, maybe we adding on some of these main uh, you know, streets or these busier streets where potentially we should make that a priority uh, you know, in our plan and call that out so that we're connecting the dots through so that you at least have magenta off of Lewis all the way through and then up to Main Street. Um, those are my comments. Thanks.
Thank you, council member Gamble. Council member Kenny, go ahead.
I had a question uh for Mr. Peterson regarding the feedback that we received uh the two different. I guess it was an open house that you had uh getting back to to the speed bump issue. What was the feedback from the homeowners that live along both sites, north, south of Powell on the speed bumps? Were they in favor of doing that?
We we really didn't talk about speed bumps because it wasn't proposed and it wasn't part of our traffic calming policy. So we we showed them our preferred our alternative design concept based on the April comments. Um, and then we brought it back to them, you know, quite a bit later, just last month. And we talked about it. Um, you know, the a lot of the narrative we've had with the neighborhood and and all of our um public outreach has been about traffic calming. You know, it's it's an issue with the neighborhood. And um whether it's through additional police presence or or some sort of feedback signs or some other heightened alert to see if people to separate those people who are intentional about breaking the law or those perhaps those people aren't aware of certain things and inadvertently break the law. But um the to to us in engineering, you know, traffic calming is an ongoing effort, you know, studies and seeing what we can do on on this project here. It's about fixing a broken street and getting it, you know, smooth again. Um, not ponding, uh fixing our existing infrastructure in a preservation perspective. We certainly do appreciate the idea of two birds with one stone, but I we also feel that, you know, the traffic calming itself is probably a bigger effort behind it. And and sometimes it feels like the traffic calming aspect is taking siege to the effort of preserving this, you know, the street segment. And so I'm trying to you know, while I appreciate certainly all the comments of the neighborhood, you know, we're also trying to focus on fixing that road. You know, just from its its need from its degraded state. So.
Right, absolutely. Uh, I'm just, you know, thinking that obviously the impact on the folks that live on that street, uh driving over them to get in and out of their homes uh very, very impactful for them. So uh they would need to be on board. Uh, certainly if uh we decided to do that. I like the idea very much of using the uh flashing signs. Uh, initially, uh that's certainly not changing the road in any way that is permanent. But uh, you know, it certainly gets your attention when you're driving through. I actually went down and drove that uh today. And uh that intersection is quite wide between uh the diagonal between Sam's and Powell. And uh I can see why people would speed there. It's kind of a big, wide, open area. Um, but um just wanted to check in on on what the homeowners had had to say about this speed bump. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, council member Kenny. Council member Scarborough, go ahead.
I concur with council member uh Gamble's comments and uh I also would like to see if we're going to go to a speed humps or bumps that it be in a policy. So it is consistent all over the city. So we don't have people saying you put them in down there, how come I can't have them up here? So I agree with him. I agree with the concept of Mr. Peterson's uh, the one they proposed to do. So if it needs my support, it has it.
Thank you, council member. Council member Fulcher, go ahead.
Um, as many of you know, this is my neighborhood, so I I feel like um I have a lot to say about this. Um, it is definitely two different issues. That road has been um in disrepair since I was a child. So I mean, it it's pretty bad. And I am looking forward to having that part fixed. We definitely do have a speed problem in this neighborhood because um of certain apps directing people down both Sam Street and um North Kelsey, and then they jet over on Powell Street. It's a constant problem, but that is a separate issue. And we, as the Public Safety Committee, came up with, or maybe it was P three, I can't remember, one of my committees last year. Um, we we crafted this um traffic calming policy for just this very reason. And we do need to follow it so we can um so we can get it done the right way. And so there are no exceptions made like like council member Scarborough was saying, let's let's do it the right way. So other neighborhoods don't say, hey, well, you did an exception on this time. Um, so I, while I definitely see why if it was our own household budget, we would do two things at once, but this is not how we do things on a city level. So um, I like the design that is proposed. Um, I definitely think that this neighborhood needs to be fully aware of the traffic calming policies so they can take advantage of it. They certainly have a need of it. They've got, we had a raceway on Powell Street, so. I'm in.
Okay, thank you, council member Fulcher. Council member Davis, go ahead.
Uh, well, I think I think she said it all. Um, well, well done, council member Fulcher. Uh, primary mission here is fix it, fix that road. And I think uh that's a good design, a good uh uh, the the project looks good. Um, including the sidewalks. It's, you know, if we're we're doing it and we get an opportunity to to do something that we, it's gonna, it's a long-term program, the sidewalks, so we do that. But uh, uh, and then uh, once this is done, we can uh, we can move into um, you know, traffic uh issues. This uh, this might have some effect on those those that that traffic or or even speeding uh in the design work. And and that would all be um looked at going through that policy that we've set up and you know, doing the studies and and finding out really what's going on. So. Um, so it basically, though, I I I think it is a good uh, a good plan for fixing that road and and getting it back into shape. So. That's my uh that's my thought on that. So, thank you.
Thank you, council member Davis. Uh, Mr. Peterson, go ahead.
Yeah, one thing I failed to point out was, you know, we talked about on the intersection on the east end where we showed some uh curb bulb outs to bring the sidewalks a little closer together. And so people aren't spending so much time walking across the street. That tends to have a traffic calming effect, but the roads skinny up or narrow up. Um, there's not this whole sea of pavement for people to feel like it, you know, it's just a big receiving area for to drive on. So there there might be, as council member Davis pointed out, there might be some uh intended calming effects by creating those bulb outs and and necking down that portion of Powell Street for that time being. So that's all I wanted to add.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Council member Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I I just appreciate everyone's input and uh I I'm I'm, as long as we have a plan in place to not just talk about, yeah, we have a traffic calming policy. But yeah, and once these rebuilding is all, once the rebuilding is complete, we're going to implement this part of the policy, then that's that's great. As long as we're doing something um to respond to the the challenges there. Thank you, everyone.
All right. Thank you, everybody. So I'm hearing a pretty strong consensus for the preferred alternative that staff has brought forward. And um, so unless there's objection to that, I understand that that's the direction uh that council supports and uh staff will move forward accordingly. Mr. Peterson, do you have anything further?
No, thank you for your time tonight.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next discussion item. This is item seven point two. Consider amendments to the city park impact fees with Mr. Swanson. We'll go ahead and move back uh Mr. Peterson and Mr. Roberts and bring forward Mr. Swanson. Mr. Swanson, you're in the panel. And Ms. Hassert, you're in the panel as well.
Excellent. Can you hear me okay?
We sure can. Go ahead, Mr. Swanson. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Uh, so tonight, we're going to be presenting you the parks impact fees. Um, this has actually gone through um the Finance and Human Resource Committee on two different occasions, once in December and then uh once in January. Um, I'll be presenting a a a higher level overview and then Ms. Hassert will go through a PowerPoint presentation, really getting down to the nuts and bolts and how the impact fees were actually calculated through the process. Um, so just big picture look is uh all cities have the the ability to charge impact fees. And the purpose of those impact fees are to offset the impacts of new developments. Meaning uh, we have uh the school district has their own impact fees. We have parks impact fees and traffic impact fees. And so as those new developments or new homes are built in the city of Monroe, adds additional people and additional, and in the case of parks, additional need for park area with roads uh either road widening or new roads to accommodate the the new vehicle trips generated by that. And that's essentially to offset uh the existing residents uh from paying uh uh paying the share to pay for that new development, essentially. And so um it really is targeted at that new development. The fees are paid at the time of building permit, so it all comes in 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 the overall check that is cut to the city for that building permit. And then um, and then uh, and then it gets distributed towards capital projects for improvements. And councils have uh uh the option to charge anywhere from a ceiling and the ceiling is essentially gonna is determined by the formula that Ms. Hassert's going to go through. Um, but the state law is very clear, it cannot be one hundred percent. You have to uh take into account uh average grants and those kind of things uh in your fee calculation. What we've cut with our consultants that we uh that we contracted with during the development of the Parks Recreation Open Space Plan uh came up with was essentially about if you took one hundred percent of what it charged, it's about a thirty percent reducer off the top across the board. So we're not charging that full one hundred percent. And um, as I said, that can go all the way down to zero depending on um uh how much of the impact fee the the council would like to impose. And so um with that, we had discussions initially in in December and then those carried over into the January meeting. And as Ms. Hasser goes to the slide, you'll essentially see four categories, single family duplex, two to four, I believe, and then um and then the multifamily. We really centered around that, the 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 two center ones, the duplex and the and the um and the two to four units. And so with those, why that was focused in on um was more geared towards the recently adopted housing action plan. And it identifies an area that's that's termed the missing middle. It's become a a saying probably over the past a couple of years. And what that is, is those middle houses anywhere in between a single family and multifamily like apartments. And um in the housing action plan, it really focused in on and even even statewide and and just as to a point, the uh when Ms. Knight introduced the um uh legislative session and they're talking about that that mandatory requirement. That's really been a focus lately of something that's been neglected over the years uh by a lot of jurisdictions as far as uh promoting or even allowing in some cases those types of units uh going through. So you'll see where the the conversation really focused in that area. I even added in the agenda bill, some of the excerpts from the Housing Action Plan um that discuss that. And um, so with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Hassert so she can go through the PowerPoint for you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. So I'm going to share my screen here. So one moment, please. And hopefully everybody can see that. So hang on one second. All right. So a lot of this will be a repeat of what Mr. Swanson was just talking about. This is just getting into the nuts and bolts of the actual calculations to get us to the numbers. And again, as we go through this, we'll talk a little bit about what impact fees are, what the parameters are that surround them, and then um, of course, what the calculations came out to be. Um, so again, their um impact fees are basically a a fee that you can charge to help mitigate the impacts of the new construction that has been occurring here in our city. Um, it's a one-time payment that's done by the new development and it helps to offset the cost of new capital that helped that would serve that new development. Um, and um, as Mr. Swanson pointed out, per RCW, we cannot collect one hundred percent of that cost. Um, the reasons that we would charge it is again, we're, you know, there's always that need to continue to develop public facilities to meet the needs of um our residents, uh both new and existing. And it has to do with the quality of life. Um, as the mayor pointed out in a prior meeting, uh, we do now have our Imagine Monroe statement that does talk about, you know, the ability to have recreation here in town that meets the needs of all of our residents. Um, and this is one way to do that as well. Now, what can impact fees pay for? They pay for the system. Now, what can impact fees pay for? They pay for the system improvements as adopted in our capital facilities plan. And the numbers that you will see here later in this presentation come directly out of the uh, public rec, or the part, the public recreation, the PROS plan. Sorry, it's a little late in the evening for me here. Um, so these numbers are numbers that are already attributed to the identified capital facilities that we are looking at over the next twenty years. It cannot pay for what they call project improvements, also known as prior deficiencies. So if there are areas of town that could use improvement but have nothing to do with new growth, impact fees cannot be used to help pay for those costs. And they cannot pay for repair, replacement, or renovation that does not add new capacity to our system. Um, again, per state law, the impact fees have to pair, it have to be for the fair share of what new development is requiring. Um, so again, growth deficiencies, no. Has to be reasonably needed and a proportionate share. So what that means is, again, we've said it a couple of times now, you cannot pay a hundred percent of the impact of new development with impact fees. And the reasoning behind that is, even though it is spurred on by the new development, existing residents can also use those new facilities as well. So they get a benefit out of it as well. Um, we cannot create credits, so um, or in other words, we cannot allow, not allow credits, we can't double charge. Meaning if we require a developer to put in parkland that becomes public park, we can't then turn around and also charge them impact fees that would help pay for that park since they, they put that in. And again, we cannot rely solely on impact fees. Um, so there has to be some money that comes from existing revenue sources. So with that, the, we're gonna go into the actual calculation. So our growth forecast per our comp plan is that in two thousand thirty-five, we are anticipating to be a little over twenty-two thousand in population. Um, so this number right here. And then we isolate out the population that is up on the hill to get an actual population of nineteen-six-thirty-five. Um, and that would equate to the number of people that would be using our parkland come two thousand thirty-five. We have a current level of service identified as sixteen point five-six acres per every thousand in population that we have in town. So if our population in two thousand thirty-five is gonna be nineteen thousand six thirty-five, we divide that by a thousand, multiply it by the sixteen point five-six to get a factor of three hundred and twenty-five sixteen. That is the, the top end of what our park needs are in two thousand thirty-five. Now, we also want to take that same factor, the sixteen point five-six level of service times our existing population. So our two thousand twenty baseline, which is again, what our population was for two thousand twenty, minus our residents on the hill, and do the same calculation to get to eighty-seven-seventy. So this is our existing need, or a prior deficiency is another way to think of it. And then it's basically just taking the difference between what our park needs are in two thousand thirty-five minus our baseline to get thirty, uh, uh, thirty-seven point four-six, which is the additional parkland that we would need between now and two thousand thirty-five to cover the needs of the growth that we are expecting. Now, if we take thirty-seven point four-six and we divide it by the overall parkland that we would need in two thousand thirty-five, that gives us twelve percent. So basically, twelve percent of our projected parkland for two thousand twenty-five is attributed to, to growth. Now, again, I mentioned um, our capital facilities plan. Um, the PROS plan, two thousand twenty-one PROS plan has a capital construction cost of around ninety-two thousand dollars. However, you know, we're looking at just a fifteen-year time horizon here to get to two thousand thirty-five. So we did prorate that, and that's where our sixty-nine point four million dollars comes from. That would be the total cost if we were to develop all the, the capital that we are anticipating over the next fifteen years. If we take twelve percent of that, which was their calculation from the prior slide, that means that eight million dollars of this capital construction is attributed to new growth.
Did you mean ninety-two million?
Well, the ninety-two million is actually for a twenty-year horizon, so that would take us to two thousand forty. But we're doing the calculation for fifteen to take us to two thousand thirty-five. So that's why this is two third, or three-fourths of that ninety-two million.
Go ahead, Ms., Ms. Hassert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
So again, if we, the formula that we use, because state law does not allow us to recover a hundred percent of that eight million dollars, we use a, a discount factor of thirty percent. Mr. Swanson alluded to that earlier. The other reason that we use that is this is a formula that the city has been using for a number of years now and has actually been vetted with the, the um, Home Builders Association or the Master Builders Association. And so this is a formula that, that um, we feel very confident would survive any type of challenge that would come along. So in order to um, honor the spirit of state statute, we would take that eight million dollars, multiply it by seventy percent, and five point six million dollars is then what we would need to recover um, through impact fees in order to try and keep our capital projects whole over the next fifteen years. Now, to figure out what an impact fee would be, we need to figure out what number of people we are expecting over that fifteen-year growth. So again, when we isolated out um, our population on the hill, our, our population is forecasted to be nineteen-six in two thousand thirty-five. Our base year of two thousand twenty was seventeen-three-seventy-three. That means we're looking at an additional twenty-two-hundred-and-sixty-two in population over the next fifteen years. And if we take that twenty-two-sixty-two and divide it into that seventy, or the thirty percent discounted number for capital, we have a per capita cost for new growth of two thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars. So now we get into the different types of dwelling units that Mr. Swanson alluded to earlier. Per our comp plan for single-family, um, it is anticipated that every new single-family unit brings in an average of three new people into our, our city. Duplexes are two point nine. Um, multi, multi-units under five units, two to four, again, brings in two point nine. If it's multifamily that is greater than five units, they on average bring in two point three people per dwelling unit. And mobile homes are similar to single-family. There is some rounding here. Um, single-family, I think it's more like three point one and mobile homes are, are, sorry, two point nine and mobile homes were more like three point one. But when you take that factor, you multiply it by the per capita amount, now we have the calculated impact fees that we would be looking at if we want to keep it at that seventy percent level um, for recovery from growth.
Thank you, Ms. Hassert. Can you hold for a sec?
Yes, of course.
Go ahead, Councilmember Gamble.
Uh, one question, Ms. Hassert. So here, so I'm, I'm to assume that since accessory dwelling unit is considered under the single-family, that it would not uh, incur an uh, impact fee because that would be under the primary for the single-family, the house. Is that correct? It's not called out anywhere in the structure.
I think I would defer that question to Mr. Swanson or Mr. Farrell.
Yeah, so if I recall, the, the impact fee uh, for the accessory dwelling units is located in the accessory dwelling unit chapter as far as if they pay or not. And I believe the code says they do not pay impact fees, but I can double check on that for you.
Yeah, if you could pull that. I, I looked through the Housing Action Plan and it, I mean, it, you know, we've got a whole section on there and wanting to, you know, push uh, you know, different things we can streamline to, to get more accessory dwelling units or to make it easier, I should say. So I just wanna make sure, cause that was an issue in the past on different impact fees, and I wanna make sure we're not duplicating that problem over again.
Yeah, I'll look right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, so while we're waiting on that, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So while we're waiting on that answer, um, again, this is where we are at calculated um, for impact fees. Um, if we want to stay on track with what the PROS plan is recommending for capital. Um, now, I do wanna stress that in a sense, then this has become our ceiling of what we can charge for impact fees. There's nothing that says council has to charge this. There's nothing that says council has to charge an impact fee at all. Um, however, if you want to develop that capital, we have to be able to pay for it somehow, and the money's gotta come from somewhere. Um, so again, this can be adjusted per council's um, appetite, so to speak. However, what we cannot do is go to a hundred percent of what we would um, need for that new ca, new capital. And the reason I bring that up is there was, well, before I get there, this slide here shows you what our historical impact fees have been. So the top graph here shows you that back in two thousand three, this was our impact fees that we charged based on the different type of dwelling unit for park impact fees. In two thousand eight, it actually went down a little bit. And then, of course, in two thousand fifteen, we decreased that even more as we were coming out of the recession and we were trying to encourage development. In today's dollars, if we were to apply inflationary factors, the actual dollar cost of those impact fees in today's dollars is actually more in line with what our calculations are coming out to be. So had we been applying in, or inflation air, inflation to or uh, some kind of growth factor every year to the impact fees, this is more in line with where we should have been um, compared to what the calculation is coming out to be. These next slides show you that here is our current impact fee that has been the same since two thousand fifteen. If we were to a, adopt the single-family dwelling unit impact fee per the calculation that we just went through, this is where it would put us in comparison to the jurisdictions that surround us here when we look at what they are charging as well. So we would go from more and down in the bottom tier to not quite the top, but kind of up there. However, when you come in and you get your permit fee, you're not paying just park impact fees. You're also paying transportation, school impact fees, fire impact fees, et cetera. So we also took a look at where all those impact fees are and what the aggregate is. And right now, Monroe is again down here. And if we were to adopt the um, calculated new impact fee, that would put us in the middle of the road here compared to the jurisdictions around us. And this is for single-family dwelling units. These next few slides also do the same thing here. This is duplexes. Here's Monroe current. Here's the new calculated amount for impact fees, or park impact fees only. And again, for the aggregate, Monroe is actually here currently kind of in the middle. This just moves us up a little bit, but again, we're not at the top. Three to four unit multifamily, again, park impact fees only. Monroe is down here towards the bottom. The new calculated amount would put us closer to the top. And the aggregate, again, Monroe is currently somewhat in the middle. And again, it would put us a little closer to the top with the new calculated amount. This is multifamily, more than five units. Again, here's Monroe currently. Here's Monroe. This again is just the park impact fee. And for the aggregate, Monroe is here more in the middle. And again, this does move us a little bit closer to the top again. And last but not least, mobile homes. Monroe is actually at the bottom for mobile home. And we would be closer up here to the top. And in the aggregate, Monroe is still at the bottom, and this would put us more in the middle for the aggregate. And this is just a reminder again of what the calculated fees are based on our history and then what they are, what the history was in current to two thousand twenty-one dollars. Now, I mentioned before that, you know, it's really council's choices to where they want to set the fees. We're kind of looking at this as more of a ceiling um, based on the calculations. However, after discussion with the Finance and Human Resources Committee over the last two meetings, there was a lot of discussion about what to do with the multifamily. Um, you know, they want, there was some concern about, again, trying to target that uh, missing middle and what we could do to maybe encourage that development a little bit and also stay true to the adopted Imagine Monroe um, statement that we now have. And so one of the recommendations that has come out of those discussions is to match both the duplex and the two to four unit dwelling unit um, impact fees to what we're, what we're, the calculation came out to be for the larger multifamily. And just to emphasize, if this is the route the council would like to take, um, not only are these numbers already discounted thirty percent, but then these two numbers would be discounted another twenty and a half percent. Um, but again, still higher than what we're currently charging. So it gets us closer to being able to amass the resources we would need in order to develop those park uh, facilities. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I am at the end of the presentation and um, we'll turn it back over to you. Uh, so that if there's any questions, Mr. Farrell, Mr. Swanson, and I are all available.
All right. Thank you. I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and recognize um, Mr. Swanson. Mr. Swanson, go ahead.
Great. Uh, so did uh, Councilmember Gamble's question regarding the impact fees for accessory dwelling units. Um, it is, the actual code in the uh, parking back fee section is silent on accessory dwellings. In the city's fees resolution, they do have a note next to uh, accessory dwelling units so that say the uh, impact fees do not apply to accessory dwelling units. The one thing I did notice though, in the park in, or excuse me, in the transportation impact fee section, they do spell it out. They put exception uh, permitted accessory dwelling units can, contained within uh, primary dwelling and are detached, shall be exempt from transportation impact fees. Um, so being that the code's still in draft form, we could spell that out for you also.
All right. Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
Yeah, I would, I would appreciate that for another count. I know um, I, I believe that was the intent before. But then, you know, what happens is, is there's turnover in council, there's turnover within the city, and then different ways of uh, um, interpreting it if it's not, if you, if it's silent. So I personally would appreciate it that it's called out, so it's very, it's crystal clear.
Is there any objection to calling it out? I would, I would agree with uh, Councilmember Gamble. Any, any objection? All right. So um, Mr. Swanson, is that clear enough?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
All right. So the, my recommendation and the staff's recommendation is to go with, if we were to go back to the, the table, uh, to go with the second table that's uh, shown here. And again, the reason for this is to um, is to help to make up for the missing middle. Um, trying to get more duplex, more, you know, two to four unit, you know, try and quadplex uh, development here in town, um, trying to bring in more housing that is affordable. Um, and so that is uh, the request is to, is for council to give um, their, your, your policy direction and what your preference is uh, between the two. So go ahead, Councilmember Gamble.
Yeah, can we just go back a slide to uh, Becky, to your ones that showed on those, the duplex? Let's go back, right? Hold on here. That's my home. Keep going back, go back, keep going duplex here. So that would put us right in the middle. So that'd put us at ten, right? Cause it's um, or right around there. Uh, and then where did the, the other land, the quad? Uh, okay, here we go. That would
It would bring us probably in here.
You still would be high. And the only reason why I wanna look at this is that if we're trying to incent that, that I don't think doing just a consistent across the board really applies. That if we're trying to incent that, we have to look at the quote-unquote competition, right? That's out there. And then we would wanna base that price based off of these charts and not so much just a blanket number. That would be my opinion on that. Because I, I agree. I think we do need to, to target that. But I don't think what we're proposing would really get us anything. I think just knowing builders and we've got some in the family, they're it makes a difference. They'll go elsewhere. If they can get five thousand dollars more or, or whatever per unit, they'll, they'll go twenty miles the other way.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm hearing support for going for a reduction for the, uh, for the attached units from Councilmember Gamble. Uh, before we move on to Councilmember Davis, just in, in theory, based on that, is there any objection to having um, a little bit more of a discount for attached housing for duplexes, quadplexes, triplexes? All right. Sounds good. Uh, Councilmember Davis, go ahead.
So uh, my concern in, and I, and I agree with uh, uh, what was just said about that. Um, my concern with, with it was the unintended consequences. If we're trying to work on a certain area um, by not having that reduction, we're basically pushing it, you know, making it harder on ourselves, trying to fix a problem that uh that we had uh uh identified. So uh that that's why I was for that reduction in it. Now, the specific amount, I guess we can talk about that uh further, but I'm for that reduction and I and the whole the impact fees and with that reduction for those those categories.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Um, so I guess, Mr. Swanson, just looking at you with your planning in parks background, but certainly to other folks. I, what what are your thoughts in terms of moving forward then? I feel that you have guidance for for chart number two. With um looking at not just doing a flat twenty point, it's too small for me to read. Percent, but maybe uh looking at the charts that you shared and maybe going for the median, you know, the middle of the graphs that are there. Um, so maybe one of them stays the way that you currently have it, but the other one is reduced. Um, you know, more to put it into the the middle of the uh impact fees uh charts. Um, does do any council members object to that? Okay, Mr. Swanson, does that sound like fair guidance for next steps?
It does. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Um, is there anything else on that item? All right. Thank you very much, everybody. Um, the staff will go make revisions and then you'll uh see this again, I think, for in ordinance. Is that correct for a public hearing?
Correct. Uh, we'll bring forward the the proposed ordinance agenda bill at at the public hearing next week.
Okay, cool. Thank you very much, everybody. And uh, thank you, Mr. Swanson and Ms. Hasser and Mr. Farrell for all of your work on this. And also the uh Finance and HR Committee. Thank you, everybody. All right, uh, we now have a need for an executive session. Uh, this is for pricing a property person to RCW forty two point thirty point. Oh, I'm sorry, Jason. I was looking over here.
Go ahead. It's okay. I I uh I I wanted to take advantage since we had Mr. Farrell forward as a panelist, and I forgot to bring this up during uh my uh my report, but I did uh, I had questions from uh from uh citizens around the lighting at the at the Lake Tide Park, and I was wondering if I might. Um, you know, maybe we can get some responses on it because the the park, I mean, the light shut off as soon as one of the you know, if you've got a lacrosse out there or whatever going, and then they leave. Uh, they go out. Well, there's a lot of people still out there because they're using the other side of the field or you know, or whatever, and kids, you know, playing soccer or there's a lot of disc golfers out there. Um, and I would be interested, I mean, I just wanted to take advantage of you being here, and maybe I can get support from a council member and maybe talking about that in future on some way we can maximize. We got this beautiful resource out there and especially right now where it's dark as all get out. Starting at, you know, whatever, or what are some ways that we can keep that um open longer for the public to utilize? Uh, so they're not playing in the dark. My thoughts.
Mr. Farrell. Mr. Farrell, the was it a policy that was adopted by the council that identified the hours with the lighting or how did how did that come about to your recollection?
Thank you, Mayor. Um so we don't have set hours as far as the drop in as far as using lights. So we we there's a there's a fee for lights for user groups, for people that reserve the fields. So um we we're kind of silent on on that. So so I would welcome um if you wanted to have a if we wanted to do a little bit of a discussion on that.
I would love that because I know when you originally talked about it, there was, I I don't know why this is sticking in my head, but it was like ten P M was the you know, the hard cut or there was some sort of, and maybe it was just in patient, you know, using some of the others, but that's what I thought was going to happen. So, you know, and I'm not I'm I'm on the other side of the track, so I don't see it every night. Uh, so when I was brought to my attention, I was like, oh, jeez, I thought it was going to be on. So I would appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, Councilman Gamble and uh Councilmember Gamble. Um, yes, actually, when you brought up the the fact about the ten P M. Uh, yeah, that is the cutoff for just for noise and whatnot, where we would, we would turn the lights off anyways. But uh, but yes, if there was, if there was no scheduled activity, let's say, let's say seven P M and it's dark. Um, you know, then there would just be the security lighting on there. So so, yeah, so we could welcome something like that and and uh kind of go over the all of the uh, you know, effects, you know.
I have a second from Councilmember Hanford, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, so uh, Mr. Farrell will look into that and we'll come back to council with uh some thoughts on that over the next couple of weeks then. Sound good? All right. Thank you. Anything else? And then we're going to move into exec session. All right. Uh, so uh, we do have a need for an executive session for pricing a property person to RCW forty two point thirty point one ten subsection one subsection C. Uh, for an initial, Ms. Knight, ten minutes?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes, okay. Uh, I will announce any extensions that may occur to the clerk, and the clerk will share that with people who are still in this meeting. And um there may, there there will be action to follow if nothing else to adjourn the meeting. Uh, so we're going into exec session at eight sixteen for an initial ten minutes. Thank you.
Councilmember Kenny in Hanford, you need to log off of this one and go to your exec session meeting link, which is in the calendar. And Ben, I'm going to boot you back out. For the record, this is Jody Wyckoff, City Clerk. The executive session has been extended five minutes. For the record, this is Jody Wyckoff, City Clerk. The executive session has been extended an additional five minutes. For the record, this is Jody Wyckoff, City Clerk. The executive session has been extended an additional five minutes. For the record, this is Jody Wyckoff, City Clerk. The executive session has been extended an additional five minutes. Do you see Councilmember Davis in Hanford, I guess, in the, are they in the attendees list?
Uh, I haven't checked yet.
Kenny is in there. I just don't have the uh permissions to bring them forward.
All right. Joe, you got it?
Yeah, I'm promoting all of them right now.
All right.
Oh, except Scarborough. I just missed him. And I apologize for the for the Zoom snafu. Technology just not my friend today.
All right, it's eight forty six. Uh, we are recording. We are now out of executive session. Uh, there's no further business this evening, so unless there's objection, we're adjourned. All right, saying done, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.